Good afternoon, everyone. This is Board President Todd Ferrante. At this time, I would like to call the Board of Education meeting to order. I would like to ask our board members to identify themselves for the record as I call your name. William Buchanan.
Here.
Katie Anis.
Present.
John Andes.
Present.
William Gordy.
Present.
Donald Smack.
Present.
Let the record show Ms. McComas is absent. She will be joining us when we resume our recess. And now, we do have a quorum. I would like to have a motion to approve today's board meeting agenda and a second.
So move, Bill Gordy.
A motion by Mr. Gordy?
Second.
A second by Mr. Buchanan. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. And now, we will recess to go over to the commissioners to meet with the IAC.
Turn your mic.
Okay, this is Board President Todd Ferrante. I'd like to reconvene in our open session meeting. And we have also been joined by our board member Elena McComas who's with us. And we have from the Interagency Committee on School Construction, Mr. Alex Donahue. Alex, thank you for being here today. We appreciate it. And of course, we just had a meeting at the Commissioners and went over quite a few scenarios. I don't know if you would like to continue the conversation or you would like to go through your presentation as well. We are live streaming this so that everyone can see it.
Thank you Chair Ferrante.
Thank you. I don't think your mic's on Alex. You'll just have to flip that up. There's a switch in the front.
Yeah, he's got it. He's on.
He's on, okay.
I think it's, I just have to choke up on the mic a little bit here.
That's okay.
All right. Thank you Chair Ferrante and members of the Board for having us here today. Appreciate this opportunity to talk with you. This is part of our, basically, ongoing process that we'd like to see be perennial in terms of partnership between the IAC, County, and the School Board to identify an ongoing approach and a set of strategies for capital improvement of the portfolio and to eventually meet all the needs in the portfolio, not just a one or two projects. And so, that's been our reason for spending many more times the norm of staff effort on these topics for Worcester County than we are normally able to do for typical LEA. Is because you all have a huge opportunity here. And we wanted to pull together as much possible information and scenarios to share and discuss and help you and the county come to decisions that will maximize available state dollars and better align them with available local dollars to get the more return on the investment.
Sure. I think for our education, because it's been rare that these, that our boards have had an opportunity to meet with the IAC. And of course, the IAC, most people don't know, that used to be under the Maryland State Department of Education and now is no longer under the Maryland State Department of Education. It's its own entity, its own agency. So there's a lot of construction questions and how you operate. Of course, we listened to some of them, but we have never had an opportunity. I don't think this Board or maybe just, excuse me, Dr. Andes and I don't know if any other Board member has had an opportunity to meet with the IAC. I don't think so. So, this is a true pleasure to be able to sit down and discuss things with you. I'd like to open it up to any of my Board members if they have any questions for Mr. Donahue.
I have a couple of questions, so I apologize, but I'm going to have to leave early. So, thank you for taking the time to come down today to meet with us. Your presentation at the Commissioners was extremely eye-opening and very productive in the sense that it really gave us the tools, I think, that we need to be able to move forward with how we tackle this situation. I was a little unclear with, at the very end Commissioner Fiore had asked for a proposed timeline of working up the scenario, the scenario of Buckingham with the Snow Hill Elementary School. And you had mentioned that it more than likely would not be a possibility because they're too far away. Can you expand on that? Because I have a follow-up question with that as well.
Sure. The way we're getting to eligibility for Buckingham is by essentially combining the eligibility with Berlin. And that's because in the context of the four school adjacent cluster of Buckingham, Berlin, Snow Hill, I'm sorry, Shawl and Ocean City, we get a certain number of eligible seats. And that number is, when, when combined with a project for Berlin and Buckingham, it makes it workable, right? The IAC doesn't, has never combined, and our rules aren't set up, to take schools from disparate ends of a county and combine them. They're really approached very separately because the students don't, can't share. They don't, they don't really potentially or actually overlap at all. What we want to do is get the most out of the eligibility system that we have, which is set up to be consistent and equitable across all the LEAs. And so, we, we've put forth these four scenarios as four possibilities that we see workable. And we've tried to identify how some of them have specific benefits, some have some drawbacks. But the eligibility differs across those because we're using an analysis that looks at the available seats versus the need. And it, it, it doesn't, what's tough is we don't have a block grant system where we can just say, "We've got X dollars and you can put it on anything." We have a system that looks at specific need in a school community. And what we're doing here is we're kind of broadening it a little bit to make the most of what the need is in the Buckingham-Berlin area combined.
So, and you did have a slide up that had the different regions circled, the three regions for our county. So is it a safe assumption to say that we can only work within the confines of the certain regions of the potential possibilities with two schools being combined with a build project? So for instance, you know, we, we have the four top-rated schools of what you claim to be the Facility Index Condition Index. And two of those are within the same of what you're proposing that we have these, these potential possibilities of builds. But two of them are outside the one region. So you have Buckingham and Berlin intermediate in one region, but then you also have Snow Hill Elementary and then Pokemoke Elementary in two separate regions. So, is it safe to say also down the road that we couldn't combine Snow Hill Elementary and Pokemoke Elementary in a build together because they're in different regions?
So, we haven't actually looked at the eligibility of all of those combinations, permutations.
Okay.
So I would want to have staff go back and actually take a look at the specific adjacencies, the capacities, and the projected enrollments for each of them because those are the numbers we go through.
Gotcha, okay.
Anytime we get a project proposal or set of projects. And this process is something that every school district goes through when it submits a project. And sometimes a school district will say that what appears to be adjacent and should be included actually is not functionally adjacent because of some geographic bent, like water, right? Or there's only one bridge that gets folks over and you can't actually move students from one attendance zone to another. And so this is actually not functionally adjacent. And we will evaluate those factors and the input from the LEA. And oftentimes, we make an exclusion. And we say, "Yep, we see exactly why that's not functionally adjacent. We'll exclude that. We'll only use the school zones that are truly accessible to the kids in the different areas." So we would have to go back and take a look through the, you know, the details of all those different possibilities. But what we know is workable and eligible is to combine the eligibility within that four-school cluster at the north end. And what that does is that gives you enough for significant support for Buckingham-Berlin kind of project combination.
And the last question that I had was, you had made mention that depending on how long it takes for us to come up with what scenario we want to decide on, we're looking at potentially being able to start this process in either fiscal year '25, but more than likely fiscal year '26.
Yeah, we're rapidly running out of time in '25.
What is the hard deadline for making it to fiscal year '25, getting on the?
What date did we actually put out recently to the LEAs?
Five o'clock today.
Twenty-fifth of this? It's next week.
Next week, okay.
But the BTL funding doesn't, is able to be allocated whenever it's ready to be allocated. That doesn't go on the CIP. So the BTL funding could be allocated as soon as it's ready.
Right. And meaning out of cycle, which means you don't have to wait until October to apply in the next CIP, it could be August or July. And that roughly 6 million could be committed to a project that's eligible. And part of it could be used for design services. And then the rest applied to construction when that starts. You know, the, the timing would be quite flexible with BTL dollars.
Perfect.
The key is just the eligibility of the project.
Okay. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Dr. Andes, I know you have some questions.
Thank you very much, Mr. Ferrante. Thank you, Mr. Donahue, and your staff for making the trip down today. Be careful on your drive back because on Route 50 there are state police officers at various locations. And they're more than willing to give you a welcome-to-the-shore goodbye ticket.
I can assure you that it's there for your own safety though.
Oh yes, absolutely. Thank you, thank you for the heads up.
These guys might have been stalking you or something, or taking good care of you, or taking good care of you.
You need to understand that Mr. Gordy is a retired state trooper.
Would never have guessed. Thank you.
Just a couple of comments and some questions. I think it's important for our community to understand that the state distributes money to local school systems for capital projects based on local wealth.
In part, in part.
In part. And I'm not sure that was clear today with the meeting with our county commissioners. So example, when you, we're the wealthiest county in the state of Maryland based on that, that formula that's used. So ours' share is 50%. And we know that that 50% really ends up to be about 22, 23% when everything's set and done. Whereas, just so everyone understands comparing, our neighboring county in Somerset, they get 100% state support. And Wycomico, I believe, is at 98%, but you can correct me if I, if I'm wrong. So I think it's important that our Lower Shore community understands that that wealth-based formula also impacts our capital funding from the state in part, in part. Whereas if we were in Somerset, it's 100% state support. And if we were in Wycomico, it's 98% state support.
Right.
Whereas we're in Worcester and it's 50% state support. And I believe there's only four jurisdictions in the state of Maryland that's 50%. Thank goodness we don't go below 50% or else we'd probably be below 50% based on that wealth formula. But I think it's important that everyone understands that. And in the reality, I think over the last several projects, and I was involved in six projects when I sat in a different chair. And it ends up to be about 22, 23, 24%.
Of total costs, right.
Of total cost per project. So the, we have to rely on our county government for 75, 78, some percent of, of that support. And we thank our county government over the years and especially our community for stepping up and supporting the needs. And our schools, as was pointed out today and our superintendent eloquently said it, our, our schools are for our community. Yeah, we use them for our kids and so forth and so on, but they're really community-based schools. I know that the people in Ocean Pines, I don't live in Ocean Pines, are very proud of Shawl Elementary School. And I know the realtors, every time they take a new family into Ocean Pines, certainly drive past Shawl Elementary School. And the same thing, if you're in West Ocean City, I'm sure the realtors also take families past, past a national blue ribbon school in Ocean City Elementary School. And that's what we want for Buckingham Elementary School. We just simply want the same thing for them. I was very pleased that you're taking into consideration the utilization rate of rural communities and understanding that utili- communities and understanding that utilization rates in rural communities are very different than they are, let's say, in a more suburban or urban community. And I very much appreciated your comments on community-based schools. I still have concerns on the adjacent schools, and we talked about this before, because when we built Shaw, adjacent schools was not in the calculus. It was not considered whatsoever. Now we're building Buckingham, and adjacent schools come into the calculus. And, and that's hard for me to understand, and it's hard for our community to, to understand why when we built Shaw, adjacent schools was not in the calculus, and now we're building Buckingham, and all of a sudden it, it is in, in the formula.
Right. I really wish I knew why the rules in place now, which were in place then, were not applied. I don't know. I really don't. I can't find any explanation of it, uh, in the, in the, in the records. Uh, I don't know. It appears that, uh, Worcester County Public Schools was in effect given a pass somehow. It's, I think, I don't know how else to say it, except that you all were very fortunate in those previous go-rounds, because, um, the adjacent school, uh, analysis is nothing new. It's been, it's been in the, it's been in our rule set so far back that I can't even find which year was the original year. And I, I've looked, and like, it's well before 2011.
Yeah, and I, I've been racking my brain, because I was involved in six capital funding school projects in this community. And, um, I go back to Yale-Stensler.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, I can never remember, and I was racking my brain, I can never remember Yale or the subsequent IAC directors ever bringing up the adjacent school issue. I don't remember it when we did Ocean City Elementary School many, many years ago. I don't remember it when, when we did Stephen Decatur Middle, Stephen Decatur High. I don't remember it when, of course, we did Worcester Tech, which is a very different place. I don't remember it when we did Pokemoke High School, and I don't remember it when we did Snow Hill High School. So I, I, I was racking my brain to find out when this adjacent school, uh, formula, and I don't remember in any of those projects that I was involved in, um, here, um, over 16 years.
And I wish I knew why that was, but, uh, what we're stuck with now is such, frankly, a shortfall in the available resources that we have to meet the need across the state and, um, the, the huge requests coming at us now from all quarters. And, and really, I just want to assure you that Worcester County is not, um, you know, an outlier in some way in terms of the need you're facing. Every school district is, is feeling this kind of pressure and this, and this stretched, and is asking us for more and more help, and we, we don't have enough. So we don't have, uh, as much flexibility as pa- as predecessors may have had.
I'm sorry, just let me ask him one question, Dr. Andy. I don't mean to interrupt you, but I want to ask, while we're on the, the adjacent school project, is, is that project come into play because it's based on cost reasons, so that because there's such little money to spread around, you wish you had more?
No, it's not cost. It's the way we calculate the student enrollment demand for a given school project location across all the projects that come in. Same way, we, we look at every project this way from every school district.
So it's based on student demand?
What is the projected enrollment? What is the available capacity and seats? And if you've got more capacity than projected enrollment, there's not a justification for, for funding additional seats in that place.
Okay. Sorry, Dr. Andy, so let you get back to it.
Just, when, when does the Built to Learn money expire? That, that $6 million that's been allocated to our school system, we've been told that we can't use it on the Buckingham project. I wish we could. We can't. That would be in, $6 million we could use on that project, but we can't. But I need, could you help me understand when that money expires?
There's a 10-year maximum time clock for using the dollars, spending them. And so because a project may take four or five years total to close out, uh, and for us to do reimbursement to you for eligible costs, um, obviously we need to have that allocated to a project in a comfortable amount of time that we can get it all spent and not lose any of those dollars for your project. The concern that's adding pressure time-wise is that the amount is not fixed. It depends in part on the interest rates. Because the legislation authorized a certain amount of money for debt service, and the stadium authority borrows, that they do bonds, right, to get the funding. And if the interest rates are higher, they can borrow less. And we have to spread that smaller amount over the 17 LEAs that share the, um, undefined percentage of the Built to Learn allocation. And so the longer Worcester County waits to put those Built to Learn Act funds on a project, the higher the risk that that amount may shrink. And it has already shrunk somewhat. And we had started out hoping for, uh, you know, for $2 billion, and it's now a total of $1.7 billion for the whole state. And so that, that has been a real consideration, and we are advising every LEA to move as quickly as possible to identify eligible projects, get the, submit your requests for us to allocate, get the IAC to approve the allocations, and move those dollars out the door. The other benefit of moving them quicker is, the sooner that we allocate and you spend all those dollars, the better position that we're in jointly to say we need additional funds in the next, what's the next, you know, funding approach.
So Alex, is it, piggybacking off of what Dr. Andy said, and maybe I didn't hear it, and if you said it, I apologize. So what exactly can we do with that $6 million of the Built to Learn money? What would you, would you say to me and to my facilities people, how to, how to use that money instead of lose it?
So you can put it on systemic projects of $4 million plus. So any large project such as an HVAC replacement, package of roofs, you can cobble together or a set of projects of the same type to make that $4 million minimum. And, uh, we could potentially find those eligible projects and allocate those funds out in the next CIP, or, well, in the next, as soon as possible, because it's, it's an out-of-cycle program, but, you know, even sooner than the next CIP. And so, you know, if you, if you choose to do that, you could easily get them out the door and take the money you would have put on those systemics and put them into the major project.
But you said it's $4 million-plus-dollar projects, right?
That's the threshold for a BTL allocation, yes. You can bundle projects to get there.
Okay.
Of the same type.
Just have one more, uh, comment to our community. We're very fortunate that we have a fantastic, uh, facilities and maintenance folks, and our custodians are, uh, at each of our buildings. If you walk through our schools, and I know many of you have, and you're probably thinking to yourself, "I can't believe this school's 50 years old." Or, "I can't believe this school is 40 years old," or whatever happens to be. And I just want to do a shout-out to all of our custodians, who do an absolutely phenomenal job in making sure that our buildings are spotless, and also our maintenance crew. I think we have 10 on our maintenance crew that addresses the needs of 14 different facilities, and they do an absolutely phenomenal job. So sometimes when you look through that list that you put together, and I thank you for doing that, and you think about our schools, but then you walk in our buildings and say, "Wait a second, this school can't be 50 years old. It's, this is, it can't be." And that's because of those people. They do such an outstanding, outstanding job. So again, I thank you for your time today. Throughout my tenure as a superintendent of schools and my tenure on the board, this is the most comprehensive overview I've ever experienced from the IAC, and I, I thank you for that. We're still going to push you to get more money for Buckingham project. We're still going to argue that we have to build Buckingham ASAP, and we're still going to do that because that's our job. And that's our responsibility to do what's best for our students. And I very much appreciate you and your staff making the trip down today, and, uh, safe travels back, and watch out for Mr. Gordy.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Andy. Any other board members? I have some questions, but I'll defer to my board members. Mr. Gordy.
Mr. Donahue, thank you so much for, for your time. As Dr. Andy says, this is a pretty comprehensive presentation, and it's, it's, uh, all well beyond, well beyond my comprehension, but, uh, we'll work on it together. The, the proposal that we could possibly do, uh, Berlin Intermediate and Buckingham together, and, and there's a possible $30 million state funding if we did them together. With such a project, there's just a lot of questions. It would, it would push Snow Hill and Pokemoke further down the road, I trust. It would, uh, would it, would it compromise what we could do with Buckingham if we say, "Well, we're going to file it with, uh, the intermediate school"? Would it make Buckingham smaller? Would it make, would it compromise what we plan to do at Buckingham if we, if we choose the plan where we try to do both of them as a package?
So in a nutshell, um, what we've calculated is that state funding eligibility estimate of 30 million across the two projects. Any construction over the state-supported square footage would be fully locally funded. So in some sense, the limiter would be your local funding, not the state side funding, right? Because the state, every project the state funds, we determine the state eligibility, we fund the state share of that square footage, and anything above it is the LEA, the county's, right, it's local funding. It, it could possibly, um, affect things later on down the road, but in this two-package, two-school package, uh, those two would be, uh, set and approved at the same time. And they would just have to, the second one would have to be carried out after the first, immediately after the first, to be eligible to use that funding. Now, this is something we've not done before. This is, this is a proposal that, that the staff has, uh, developed and that we feel we have support from our commission for. Uh, the commission would have to approve it, and, uh, it's, it's new. It would be, it would be in agreement. We've not done that before, right? Previously, it would have been, you know, if you want the state eligibility for that two-school, it would, the solution would be the consolidated single building. But we're effectively saying, we're trying to find a way to help you get further along your desire to support two community schools by simply breaking that eligibility up into two pieces.
I, I fear the timing would, would delay everything, though. If we, if we, if we're going to consider venturing into that package, then it's going to take a fair amount of research on what to do with Berlin Intermediate and the planning that Joe's sitting here.
Yeah, it's certainly not, uh, not instantaneous, but...
If we, if we step back and say, "Well, let's consider the two-school package," then that's going to delay everything, uh, I, I think, uh, at least a year or something.
Somewhat. I don't know how much yet. What we need to do is get a sense of what you all are looking to consider as options, and then we can lay out, "Okay, what would the timeframe be for these? How fast can we move this?" And what would it do to any other projects or work that you know you need to do in the next five, six years, and, and, uh, what happens to, you know, the, the full portfolio? You know, obviously, once we get some more feedback and discussion, we can go back and, you know, crunch the numbers, take a look at the timing, and come back with some suggestions how to, about how to get the most done most, most quickly, right? And, and devote all available dollars. And then we'll also have a sense of how much you would be looking to receive in state share in the coming years, so that we can add that to what we're collecting from all the other school districts and be able to make, um, a far better-informed, better-supported request to the General Assembly for out-year funding. Now, I just want to mention one thing. We've been taking general estimates of need to the General Assembly and the Department of Budget and Management, and over the last few months, they've heard the message and they've seen the data we've brought, even not as specific as we'd like it to be. And that helped motivate the, the, um, uh, the governor and the comptroller and the treasurer to, uh, move to lift, raising the state's bond limit from $1.2 billion a year to $1.7 billion a year. And they said one of the two big factors, uh, that they were considering as making that necessary is the overwhelming need for school construction capital funding. And so they're hearing us, right? But we need to be coming with the details about what is the project set going for? What does it look like? What's it going to cost? Because the dollar figures are greater than the steady state funding we've had over the recent years. It's going to require a change.
This question seems way too simplistic, but if, if we elect to go with Buckingham on our, with no, no state support, what are you going to do with our $30 million?
That eligibility is attached to the, that project package. So what we would do is we'll devote any available state dollars that we can give to Worcester County to whatever eligible projects you have. It could be a stack of five HVAC projects and a couple roofs. We, we'll put, we'll put the state dollars on those, but if you were to select an eligible project package such as a Buckingham-Berlin combination, just for example, we can put, you know, you prioritize that, we'll put the state dollars on that.
Thank you. In regard to that, uh... In regard to the concept of, um, of Buckingham and, uh, and Berlin, with that $30 million coming from the state, um, I guess what I'm looking at is that, I'm, I'm just taking a figure. If, if Buckingham was going to cost $50 million and, uh, and to do Berlin Intermediate at $50 million, it was $100 million, then we get $30 million from the state, then it means that the, uh, our county, uh, would have to come up with the $70 million of that. In regard to if the county did the whole $60 million, uh, it just seems like that might be the better route. I don't know. I, I'm, I'm just kind of like looking at this as, 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 uh, as simplistic as I can in regard to that, you know?
So we had in our previous presentation that we brought to the earlier meeting, we had some specific calculations shown as to the state and local shares and what would, what it would cost locally and what, what would get you more. I don't have those right at my fingertips now to be able to show you. We can pull those up, um, for another occasion or come back around to it. But my memory of it was that we saw the local cost actually being less with a couple of those options. And, um, I can't, uh, you know, off the top of my head, uh, walk you through those calculations now, but, but I think there were some ways and, um, yeah, over the 15-year cost, it actually saved significant amount for the county.
Okay.
So part of that is because if we're knocking out two old, high-cost buildings, you're going to save a significant amount of system replacement costs for that other one, right, that you're otherwise would be saddled with still going forward.
Yeah, I, I understand that, you know, the, the long-term.
Right.
Looking at it long-term, you know, would, would benefit. But I do know that sometimes people look, don't want to look at the long-term in regard to dollars, and they want to look at the short-term. Uh, you know, that's just seems to be the financial climate in, in some, uh, in some counties in regard to that.
Understood.
You know?
Right. The, the picture we're seeing statewide is that the long-term total cost of ownership of the buildings has been increasing so much because of construction costs as well as operation and maintenance costs. It's just harder to find, um, parts for some things. It's harder to, you know, certain, uh, replacement items are more expensive now, uh, and staffing is tougher and more expensive. All those costs are rising. A number of school districts we've been working with on looking at the long-term costs have found that it really does save a huge amount to do more full replacements and renovations versus pushing them off and doing just system replacements. Uh, one district in particular, Frederick County, uh, has officially adopted that... One district in particular, Frederick County, has officially adopted that as a strategy and said, we are going to ramp down the number of small system replacements we do. And they are ramping up the number of major projects they're planning and asking us for state funding for. So they're, they're pushing the state much harder than they had previously. And they've come to the conclusion that they have no, no alternative to doing that. And so, we now have, from the state side, been looking at the state share of future Frederick projects as being greater, and we're factoring that into our long-term cost planning.
Thank you.
Okay. So, one of the things, utilization rate was how you guys are using your basis for funding.
It's not the only, only basis by any means. It's, it's one of the factors.
But it's one of the bases that you use. So, I noticed that, you know, you try, you said you were trying to keep it fair throughout the state when you're looking at all these things, and you look, and that's, you can tell me for our audience, what, are there four items that you're looking at? Utilization being one of them? The age, the age of the school?
So, what I'll do is I'll go back to...
Sure, that would be great.
To this funding factor formula, which is what we use as the basic funding approach for a project. We start with the eligible enrollment, and that is, is derived by looking at the projected enrollments against the capacity of the facilities, including the adjacent, right? Because administrative solutions are one way to meet a need. Redistricting is, I know, a bad word. Nobody, nobody wants to use that word. But the IAC is forced to look at capacity that's available as being not maybe preferred, but certainly available to handle some need. And so, the eligible enrollment process does take into account if there is eligible, or if there is available capacity in, that's usable and accessible in nearby school. So, after that calculation is done, then we assign the square footage that's appropriate for that enrollment level, and then multiply by the cost per square foot, updated annually, and then the state cost share. And that's how we end up with the eligible dollars for a project.
Understand. So, but, you know, we talked about, especially, community-based schools have additional space because we use, we use that additional space where some other school systems don't. And I didn't know if the IAC had a position on providing construction funding based on small class sizes. Because you don't have a position there, but it looks like, basically, based on what you're taking, that that, it looks that way. Because we've been very successful, one of the most successful school systems in the state, but we've been, we've, we've managed small class sizes, and that's one of the things that's been able to maintain our success in our schools. And, you know, when we, one of the scenarios that you grabbed about putting, you know, moving over to the middle school, putting the sixth grade there, obviously, three hundred and fifty kids, and not many places for vehicles to go, because it would create a logistic traffic jam in that area. And, and it would be, it would be horrible for people to get in and out of there, because there's just nowhere to go. So that's part, that's part of the problem. And I didn't know if that was, those scenarios that you look at, it looks like, I understand you want to make sure the schools are utilizing every square footage that they can. But again, you know, it doesn't work for every scenario. It, it, I know you want to be equitable, but it doesn't work for every single school system. So...
So, the approach that the IAC uses is to use a standard state rate capacity calculation that is predicated on, on a same, universal kind of class size. And any LEA could obviously operate smaller classes if they want, but that does come at a significant operational capital cost premium. And it is, has been kind of longstanding IAC policy that it's not, viewed as equitable for the IAC to fund higher for one school district versus the others. And that in, in spreading the very restrict, scarce, right, limited state dollars as fairly as we can, we have to be able to fund school projects equally across the state.
I understand. In higher populated areas, you're going to have a denser, you're going to have more of that square footage used than you are in lower populated areas.
There are a couple other considerations here that, you know, if, if we have time to go into them, I'll ask Melissa to add some additional comments on the class size calculation.
You, you can come up and use the mic if you would, please.
Oh, I have a camera in my hand. Thank you. Yes, so as part of the blueprint work, work group, we, we did, we did raise the issue, study the issue. It, it cannot be part of our funding formula, but there's an acknowledgement that a community school where an LEA might choose to use small class sizes also just needs additional resources. So, we don't determine how those additional, additional resources are provided, but there is a concentration of poverty add-on element to the gross area baseline available for communities that are over fifty-five percent concentration of poverty. And that's the data provided by MSD. We don't, we don't do that data. It's available to you all, but it's about, it's provided by MSD, and it maxes out at eighty, eighty percent. So it, it mirrors the concentration of poverty state cost share add-on also. That's an increase to the percentage. There's a five percent increase in state cost share for a school in a concentration of poverty. And there's also a gross square foot add-on that's up to a thirty-five-hundred square foot add-on to the gross area baseline for a school in a concentration of poverty. And, and we, we know of two other LEAs who will be submitting a request for that add-on based on the fact that they do have small class sizes in the elementary school in areas of concentration poverty.
And that's based on just the school itself? The, the individual school that we're doing, okay?
Individual school? Yeah, it, the characteristics of the student enrollment.
Correct.
Technically. It's not the building, it's the kids.
Yeah, but...
And the other piece is that there have been other, we're seeing other approaches where the school district is pushing in significant additional support to kids to achieve the outcomes that you're looking for in reduced class sizes, but not necessarily with the same physical space costs.
Mm-hmm.
Right? Do you want to describe a little bit about kind of the range of what we're seeing?
The more common feedback and the more common requests that we've gotten so far, this is brand-new, just approved last, last fall, but they've been for resource support spaces. So that the space is needed to support additional adults in the rooms, and those include smaller breakout spaces and the resource rooms to be able to pull kids out, or space in the classroom to be able to add adults into the classroom for push-in services. So there's a variety of things that people are asking for, and it's more typically that people are adding those other types of spaces to schools than they're using that in order to reduce class sizes.
Sure. I want to ask Mr. Price, he's our operations manager, and he has been involved in many school projects, and I know that there's probably some questions that he had, and I want to give him the opportunity, before I call our speakers up, to ask any questions. Mr. Price?
Thank you, Mr. Ferrante. The only thing I'm confused about is the statement that we shouldn't be getting more funding because we do small class sizes. We don't get more funding. When we submit these forms, let's say Buckingham, and I'm just going to throw numbers out there. You got a projected enrollment of five hundred. Your formula says you should build an eighty thousand square foot school, and you provide funding for an eighty, fifty percent of the funding for an eighty thousand square foot school. We build one oh four, our commissioners pick up that other twenty-four thousand square feet, the state doesn't. So, then we get punished for building the one oh four because you say, look how many classrooms you have, and your state rate of capacity is twelve hundred. Well, maybe there should be a modified state rate of capacity for the eighty thousand you told us we should build and that you paid for.
I'm not following you on that, that logic, but, but I, I, what I, what I do think I'm hearing is that the...
Mr. Donahue, if you could speak into the mics or our live stream.
It's the lifetime of the building. The initial construction cost isn't, isn't representative of the actual lifetime cost of the building, and the state will participate in every project in that building for the life of that building once it's built. So we do have a state in, in the neighborhood of the building.
So for HVAC replacement, roof replacements, twenty-four, twenty-five, thirty years down the road, you are going to participate. It's not that big of a deal, but a hundred and four thousand square foot school, and an eighty thousand square foot school, we're building it for eighteen...
...three square foot classroom.
You're saying, build it at eighty thousand square feet for twenty-three, and that's what we're providing you funding. And then you come back and say, oh, you built a hundred and four? That school could take twelve hundred students. Well, you didn't pay for the other twenty-four thousand square feet.
That shouldn't be in the calculation.
Do a modified state rate of capacity. If we had...
What's the state rate of capacity for that?
But what the state will do is pay for the full state share of a hundred and four thousand square feet roof replacement, maybe twice more in the lifetime of the school building, and the cost of the replacement for the full square footage of the HVAC system, which is significant, et cetera, et cetera. When you add that up across a portfolio, it's a lot, that's a lot.
Well, it's, it's three or four projects over twenty, forty years, whatever, as opposed to what we're running into Buckingham now is, okay, two hundred empty seats at Ocean City, two hundred empty seats at Shawell, which I really don't, but based on how you're doing the calculations, I don't. And both of those schools, we built them much larger than the fifty percent money we got. Shawell, I think, was sixty-eight thousand square feet, and we built one oh four to keep the, the class sizes small.
Yeah. What I, what I do hear you saying, suggesting is some kind of modification to the state rate of capacity approach.
Let's go back to what the form said that you were going to participate in. You participate in eighty thousand square feet times a hundred and forty-one students times whatever the square foot cost is that year. That's your participation. The county commissioners, again, pick up all of the other twenty-four thousand square feet we built.
What I can tell you at this point is that I doubt there's any appetite on the commission for making exceptions to the state rate of capacity approach. We've not encountered any other LEA asking for that, to my knowledge. It's, this is unique.
Well, the Buckingham issue is unique, it's the first time we ran into the adjacent school issue.
If I'm, if I may, I think the other aspect of what Mr. Price is saying, thank you, Mr. Price, is that we're being punished for building Shaw bigger than what we were supposed to, and Ocean City Elementary School bigger than what we're supposed to. Because of the adjacent schools, we're being punished. I think that's what Mr. Price is saying, and we paid for that addition, not we, our county paid for that additional space. So that additional space, when you add in the adjacent schools and look at square footage, we're, we're being, the only word I can think of is we're being punished for building a school bigger than what you told us we should build based on the allocation of the student population of that twenty-four thousand square feet. Then when you do the calculus, calculation of adjacent schools, using that a hundred and four thousand instead of the eighty thousand, so consequently, we're being punished for building a school bigger than what we should have built it based on what you, you personally, what the IAC said we should have built it. So consequently, it, it doesn't make, I, I hear Mr. Price loud and clear, that when you do the adjacent school, you should only do the eighty thousand square foot that you paid for, or the sixty thousand square foot at Ocean City Elementary School, and not the hundred and four that it is, and I'm making up all these numbers, incidentally, or the ninety thousand at, at Ocean City. That, that's what I think he's saying, and when you do the...
Yeah.
Did I hear that? And that's, 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 that's what I believe he's saying, that we're being punished for building a school using local dollars bigger than what the state said we should build it for. Because when you do the adjacent school calculation, you're calculating the entire square footage of Shaw, the entire square footage of Ocean City, and you're saying, wait a second, you have some empty seats at Shaw, you could move some kids to Shaw. And I want our community to understand that the, that the executive director of the IAC said the word, said the R-word. No member of the Board of Education said the R-word, nor did the superintendent of schools said the R-word. And I just want to make sure that everyone in our community understands that no one on this Board of Education said the R-word. Because in, in a school system, and I did the R-word once, and it's not fun. So, my, my point is, I'm just trying to clarify what I believe Mr. Price's point was on the adjacent schools and the total calculation. And I, I hope I captured Mr. Price and what he was saying.
Thank you for helping clarify that. It's certainly not designed to be a punishment system by any means. But what it, what it's designed to do is not fund one school district more per student and/or per, you know, need, demand, more than another one seemingly arbitrarily. And what we're looking to do here is work with you and the county to identify what set of strategies and projects collectively is going to get you to a portfolio that is educationally sufficient, fiscally sustainable. And I think that what we've thrown out there for discussion in terms of scenarios are in that direction, are certainly designed to help attain that, and are, are attempting to grapple with the reality that compared to twenty years ago, all these capital dollars that we have, whatever the number might be in a given year, just doesn't buy as much as it used to. And now, the need is huge, right? Half of the buildings in the portfolio are going to need something significant in the next fifteen, twenty years perhaps. How are we going to, how are we going to, how are we going to meet that need, right? We've got to do each project as absolutely efficiently as we possibly can to be able to get to the, the needed outcome in the end, right? And this is a long, a long effort, is a multi-stage effort, and we would like to come at it with you in a way that is continually collaborative, and it isn't just occasional, it isn't, oh, well, you know, let's talk, we haven't talked in a few years, we've got a project. We've got to, we've got to build something that's living and gets adjusted each year a little bit, hopefully, so that there are not surprises coming at anybody. There's not a, what do you mean, the project isn't eligible, kind of a realization point. We want to get to something where we're all looking at these planned steps. I'm able to make the case in Annapolis for the needed state share for the projects that are coming down the pike. If it doesn't look like we can, the IAC's going to get those appropriations, I can give you the heads-up early so that you can identify, right, what's our Plan B? What are we going to, which, what are we going to do instead? Are we going to change the sequence of projects? Are we going to flip something? Are we going to combine something? Are we going to go with systemics instead of a major project this year? We'll be able to work that stuff through together. That's the, that's the hope.
Would you, would you go back to your committee, Mr. Donahue, and, and at least give them the scenario that Mr. Price did you? Because it seems to be a valid one. And it seems to be the fact that, I mean, if, if we as a local system are going to build it bigger than what you've allocated for your funding, that you would certainly take a look at that when you do an adjacent school project next time.
I will absolutely bring it back for deeper analysis. I think what, what needs to be put up against that is that we have a number of school districts around the state who are grappling with the same challenges, and they're choosing different methods that don't necessarily have that same cost problem. So, we're seeing a whole range of solutions out there. And what we'd like to do is help all the school districts see what the others are doing, so you can see the pros and cons of each strategy and approach.
Sure.
And, you know, things will evolve. The LEAs are the laboratories of innovation.
Absolutely. New school systems are exactly the same, and that's why we, we wanted to point that out to you, especially because we don't receive funding from, from the IAC for, for that additional square footage. So, Mr. Price? So, Mr. Price, do you have any other questions?
No further.
Okay. I think we have at least one speaker, and I know Mr. Bertino, President Bertino has joined us. Thank you for joining us. I'm going to ask Kate to come up, and you grab a mic.
Thank you. Sit next to you. Hi, I am Kate Hume. I live at 10226 Hotel Road. So from you, from the IAC, we heard the term available capacity and underutilization, which I understand from the paper, you know, the first calculation. But for us in Worcester County, it's about maximization. That is what we are doing with our small class sizes. We maximize the teacher's ability to reach those students, to meet their needs, and effectively teach them and grow. We have said time and time again that the small class sizes must be a priority for us. We have reiterated that to the board. They've heard us. We, as parents and the community, have said that to the commissioners, and we are really trying to urge them to understand that this is a priority. And unfortunately, what I'm hearing is that priority then must be funded locally. I urge
And I'll just
Yeah, go ahead.
Note that as a former teacher and principal, I absolutely understand where you're coming from and why you're saying what you're saying. But the IAC's position for many years and to date has been that because of the scarcity of state dollars and the need to spread them as equitably as possible across all 24 districts, that, that funding extra for that programmatic approach is not something that they can equitably do. So for now, that's
Yeah. And while I understand that, I think there is something to be said for Joe's point there. The equity that you're trying to apply to us is actually make it inequitable because we, as a county, are going above and beyond what you, what the IAC and this calculation deems as the rated capacity size. We say that that is too high, so the county dollars are going to that. And instead of equitably only applying what your capacity levels would have funded, you're now looking at what we did instead and saying, "Oh, there's space." But that doesn't, that's not equitable because the state did not absorb that cost. The state, so now we are not the same playing field because we are going above and beyond with local dollars, because it is a priority here. So one of the options also that you presented, that I want to make sure I share because other parents I know that could not speak here today, we're very concerned about. My children are 10 and 13, but I can say, and I agree with them wholeheartedly, if you have a three-year-old going into pre-K3 with sixth graders, that is just a crazy and absolutely, I hope, totally off the table. It is not a workable solution for us, for most parents. I think that they would really be alarmed, and that is not the kind of culture or environment or way that we want to go for Worcester County public schools. So I really implore that to never be a considerable solution. And then my only other question, too, that I have is the option of moving fifth grade back into our other schools because supposedly on the calculations, there is capacity there. I do have a daughter in one of the schools that supposedly has capacity, and I am in there, and I can tell you that that capacity does not actually exist based on our, again, parameters for class sizes, which in Shaw are about 17 on average, up to probably, I think, 21 in a classroom. So if you were to add another grade level into there, we're looking at, you know, 21 to 25 kids in a classroom, which is huge at elementary school level, that is incredibly high, and the space just would not be able to hold it. So you're looking into a whole nother cost factor that would have to be explored in consolidating those classes down and increasing the class size, which, again, our community and our county has said is one of the priorities that we hold dear and that we attribute to the success of our students and our schools.
Thank you. By the way, those are exactly the type of details that we would want to work through with the school, you know, system officials in, in a working group kind of a process so that, I mean, as I said, the four scenarios that we put in the presentation were four possible ideas that we would suggest be explored, considered. We assume there are more, right? Some others. And of those four, you may very well come back and say, you know, your cons list was short, right? You forgot or didn't know about these other considerations, and this eliminates that, feasibly speaking, or whatever. That's exactly what that's designed to do, is, you know, elicit those, those need to be gone through, absolutely would, you know, would want to work through those.
That's all I got.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions before we adjourn the meeting? First of all, anyone else? I want to thank Mr. Donahue for you, for taking your time, not only to meet with us at the commissioners' meeting, but to come over here and, and talk with us as well as your staff. We appreciate it. I hope this won't be the last time we see you, and I hope you don't get a traffic ticket on the way home.
No. Thank you.
But we do appreciate you, we enjoy the conversation, we hope we can continue it.
Looking forward to the next one, thank you.
Thank you so much. We have a lot of conversation with our commissioners as well, but we do appreciate your time and you taking the time. So thank you again.
Thank you.
Now, I need a motion before we close the meeting out. Can I have a motion to adjourn today's board meeting in a second?
Motion.
Motion, okay. A motion in a second, a motion by Mr. Smack, a second by Ms. McComas. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We are now adjourned. Thank you.